It's not.
I don't know how. I don't know how to put some.
Still waiting on the names. Do you have it on the side? It was taken off on the one. Here, here.
Oh, it's like right here.
That's what we're saying goes.
Yeah, on the side.
Which one?
Yeah, it is.
Try one of those.
That's uh, down.
That's it.
How are you?
All right.
What's what you want to do? Hey.
Mine's.
Y'all are right.
There.
I'm sure I don't know what I'm talking about.
You all know. I'll find.
It is.
It is.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if your stand will recite the flag.
All right, you'll run for my back now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mayor Kim Harrison Edwards here, Councilwoman Sherry Rogers here, Councilwoman Randy Bowen, Councilwoman Debbie Gump here, Councilwoman Herb Curtis.
Here.
City manager Nate Stansbury.
Chris.
City attorney Brian Bailey.
Here.
Finance director Suzie Johnston here. Intern chief Mike Posey. Chief Jimmy Suttle. Building code zoning enforcement officer Marty Lewis.
Here.
Street commissioner Mike Starrett.
Here.
Sanitary director Dee Evans.
Okay, we have no public comment, uh, no one has signed in. I would like to request that council consider amending the agenda to uh, bring before council the new business items. Uh, ordinance uh, for fifteen miles speed limit. The speed limit adjustment and the grant for engineering fees. We thought that by the time that we finished up with those, we could move into the the city code. So if that's agreeable with everyone, I'll entertain a motion to amend that for those items to be moved in front of old business.
I'm moved to amend new business items to be placed in front of old business.
Well, sir.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great, we'll start out with the ordinance for fifteen miles per hour speed limit on Summit Street.
I like Michael's indicating he wanted about fifteen miles prior with me to or being asked for up on Summit Street.
Right, Summit Street.
Let me see all over. I think you're the one that asked me about that one. Of three.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
I said. Mr. Benson, I thought I had asked for that and actually it was Debbie who asked for it and I'm she was asking if we can change. So part of it up there is fifteen, but some of, some of that up there is not. That's we've done the paving up there. We, we have a one-way racetrack.
It's very rare.
And state code indicates city, city streets and residential areas are generally twenty-five in the lower. The lower, below twenty-five, you have the passing. So that's, that's why we're giving.
What are the numbers? It just says twenty twenty-three dash.
Oh, three. Zero three active.
And any other will be zero four.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three by title only.
I'm moved to have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh three ordinance of the little city of Weston Creed fifteen miles per hour speed limit on Summit Street by title.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three and ordinance of the city of Weston creating a fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Summit Street. First reading by title only.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept or reject ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh three. By title only. I'm moved to accept the um ordinance twenty twenty-three oh three um adjusting the speed limit on Summit Street. Is there a second?
No, sir.
It's been moved in second discussion. We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Councilwoman Herb Curtis.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next speed limit adjustment for Cottage Avenue first street.
I think there was maybe some uh, desire to have fifteen miles per Cottage Avenue. But that's again, we're in the same situation, so we have to pass.
I think it's also the same situation where Park of Cottage Avenue had a speed limit reduction and this park did not, so. This, they've been this rate uniform and fifteen miles. As per residents. It's very narrow there.
Yeah.
Until people are driving twenty-five. But thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
So this is on the cities. And got the county.
It's on any, I, I read it to make it on any, any part of the road dedicated as a municipal street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why I was gonna say, cause if you look from Center Street all the way up to Allen Street, going to State.
Center.
In center all the way down. Going to State.
Oh, okay.
This first street fifteen. From Cottage. Around seven fifteen, because I can't imagine it ever.
I can't even.
I don't know, but I just say those, those streets long, those streets are longer states. Because.
You make the Congress first. I don't think they really get.
They can.
The event on the first street because there are too many stop signs, they made it so.
Now I'm talking like where they push, you need to move all the way around.
Oh, that's pretty easy of the cost.
Yeah, you have to get fifteen through there, yeah. I'm moved to have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh four creating a fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Cottage Avenue by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance twenty twenty-three oh four ordinance of the city of Weston creating fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Cottage Avenue. First reading title only.
I'm going to approve the first reading of twenty twenty-three oh four ordinance creating fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Cottage Avenue by title only. Is there a second?
No, sir.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Councilwoman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next grant for engineering please.
And this is in regards to the uh Home Beer Club, Wesley Cultural Center project, there's a a grant that's been extended through the state sort of presentation office for exactly how.
Yes, they should have it, it's in the back. He said to me.
Yeah, what's the name that's a, I'm surveying and planning. So it normally is, it closes in October thirty-first, you, I think you guys have a letter in your packet as well from uh, Miss Susan that says that they didn't have enough central applicants, they haven't had enough applicants, so they requested they open to back up thirty-five local governments. And then HLC to apply for more of this funding. So we're probably looking at an application around fifteen thousand dollars. But our total thing would be, we can respond with thirty, so that which I think we can cover three large matching funds into Columbia and all that stuff that we are figuring around, so um, these are things, one of our one of the prerequisites of us receiving the last batch of funding from the state of short, footprint of our company is that we engage uh, civil engineering and have some plans done for the project, and so I think this is something we're gonna have to do, and so to get seventy percent of that cost paid for is well worth the effort, and so discard all these, we're working from far and current application, we can compare notices, and so want to get your all's blessing on this. If you're willing to grant it tonight, we continue with that.
So you're asking us to approve an application for the survey and planning grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, which requires a match of.
Thirty percent.
And once we get the grant, we'll obviously come back, we'll all that number may change a little bit, we'll calculate a little bit of that. But we'll come back and get the approval to sign that grant before we, we do, we just want you to be aware before the application.
You want approval on this?
Please.
I think it's due here in a week.
Oh, okay.
To that, Brian.
Yeah.
I'm moved to approve the survey and planning grants. Is there a second?
Sorry.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen. Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Councilwoman Herb Curtis.
Yeah.
She carries.
And now we're back to the agenda, review and confirm updates to city code. The most exciting part of. Well, this should go a lot faster than the ones in the past because we're just reviewing, I know. I'm hopeful, but we're just reviewing courts and commissions tonight, and, and it's.
I'm trying a different tactic this time.
Thank you.
With the copies with proposed changes.
I think that's very nice, I'm gonna prove that.
That's what, what I want. What I envision is we all just kind of generally agree to changes, whatever changes you all want to do, and they say whatever the changes, I'm just gonna put a check mark behind it and go page to page.
Okay.
Most of it. Most of it is, is kind of, it's not pipe by stuff, it's just kind of hate to use the word updating, it's just kind of changing the match match the different subsections of each board. There's a couple of different things, we'll get to those here. You guys will start at page one. That's just like a, page one of the table of contents, I guess. When you when you, when you turn to the Code Appeals Board section, we had the Code Appeals Board had uh, adopted various rules on how it would function. And those rules I keep them up on page four through I think seven, eight. Nine. All the way to page eleven. All that stuff in red is just what the, the Code Appeal Board has, has previously adopted as their, as their rule in particular in meetings and how to deal with cases and and I think the this, certainly the first page, the, the outline of what's in each subsection is, the red stuff is, is what's currently, or what I would propose to be the changes, the outline, the highlighter to point people to where you can find the procedure for hearing, if you would look to thirty-two point oh three. And whatnot.
There is language changes outside of structural changes, then.
Yeah, it, yeah, you know. For the code of building. There. I guess the biggest reason is we had a Code of Appeals Board under whatever from nineteen seventy or whatever the language was. And the state building code to, to enforce building code, you have to adopt the state building code. And I feel that what we have adopted for the Code of Appeals, the state building code lack of bedroom requires you to have a Code of Appeals Board to have somebody to appeal to, and it isn't like what the, the building code officials do. And the, the language that we're using in, in red, the proposed changes, to me match up better with what is being done with state building codes nowadays, as opposed, as opposed to what we were doing before we were forced, without, before state law makes us. I'm, I'm not making sense. In night, before the state building code came into, came into being, it, it seemed like any city could adopt any building code they wanted to adopt. However, they wanted to run their building code, they could. Now, the doctrine of the state building code kind of narrows everybody down with trying to perform the same function.
But in their two cities are the same. So there was probably some justification there while they were a little different from.
You, like from city, from from.
From city to city.
Yeah, and I think there is, I think the state building code does give you some play in how to, how to run your building code, or how to run your building.
Okay.
And I, and that's what, that's what this stuff in red, yeah, is.
Can I argue a little bit, are we into the language yet or still looking at the structure?
We're going to, wherever. Wherever you all want to be, if you're happy with that first page, we can use land of natural language. Like page one. I think all those things.
It's Codes Appeal Board and not Code of Appeals Board. Codes Appeal, okay, did we get that wrong? I know that's stupid, I'm not letting you say that because we. Yeah.
Make sure. I don't think it's one matter one way or the other, okay.
It will in two thousand fifty-eight.
Code appeals.
I wanted to point out on page four, Brian, you had scratched out, there's hereby established state of work to be public code. Billboard consisting of five members is qualified by experience and training. I think we do, if we scratch all that out, we don't say what size our Code of Appeals Board is in this language.
In the state code makes you have five.
That.
We should probably state that somewhere, I think that's why he's saying.
Yeah.
And.
And maybe you can put a period right after five members. Because you said board member shall be appointed mayor, considering which permanently is given, I'm with that. And and then I think you should speak to where it says members of the board shall be nominated by the mayor, and each nomination shall be approved or rejected by the common council. If that should say. Just so the word clear, mayor, or city manager, whichever one the mayor wants.
Okay.
Well, I don't care, but I just think it's so, we're gonna, we're gonna use an instruction manual, right, we'll put this and say, well, how do we appoint these people? We want the instruction there.
Okay.
About he's doing that.
Yeah, so you're looking at the first, you're looking at.
Hey, I don't think we should scratch everything.
And we're there all the way to.
Consisting of five members, I think that should come back.
On page four.
Yeah, we're at the very top there.
First paragraph, oh, I see it, yeah.
Yeah. Then you should put a period after five members, and you can scratch everything else there, but when you get to members of the board shall be nominated by the mayor, these are my asks, shall be approved or rejected by the common council. Think you should have that. And then I, I think we're kind of scratching the language about terms, because I think we can find people to do it. Next down there.
It's their career.
Right.
And members of the board shall be nominated by mayor.
Or city manager.
Or city manager.
I read that earlier, I didn't even get.
Mm-hmm.
I think, yeah.
As you all are receiving the feedback.
Looks pretty good to me.
Did you read it? So, pardon for asking. Or you indicated, did you run and do this, or sit this and all? From where? Behind this.
I liked your explanation at the beginning.
Well, it's about the instances, yeah. I just changed off to, that's why they're not there all the time.
So are we down to page eleven then, the Hope Creek Blood Control Project Board?
Yeah.
Which I didn't realize I had another job.
Gradually.
Pages at eleven.
And I didn't, I didn't really dive into this one very deep. Do we still have the Hope Creek Blood Control Project Board? That, is that still?
We did. Brian and I talked about it today, I, I don't really think it's, the project is done, right, I think probably most likely they had to create a board to shepherd the project through, and then build those dams afterwards, White, White Harbor, and all that stuff out of Hope Creek. Um and I think right now, I think that West Virginia Conservation Agency has that completely under their offices, from what I understand, I mean, we, we pay them a fee each year.
Yeah, just like the county does.
Yeah, yeah, and so I think that that, for all his purposes, is the Hope Creek Project. One suggestion I had for Brian is like, can we create a section in some of these boards that are, you know, suspended line or something like that, that says, you know, this board is your advice is, is going to be suspended by council, can be reenacted by majority vote, something like that, you know?
I agree with that, because there'd be a case in the future where it needs to be reenacted.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there may be a project.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's a great idea.
You can add that vestage there.
Right.
You can see what's done. Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not say this is gonna happen, but.
Allow for it.
Yeah.
Sounds good, yep.
Yes, we're down to thirteen units of planning. We're in this, we're going to plan a commission. Is that the planning commission?
That is what I'm planning.
And most of this, remember we
We redid this.
Redid, and all this, I'm thinking the American legal caught that and put it all in there, the best I could.
Oh, good.
You know, what must this? What must alter or change? Or that.
From page fifteen, why are we listing the original?
Uh, yeah. That was, that was, that's still in our code, is, is how they listed the initial, I don't know if that's, that still needs in there. Does it have a, does it jump off point for how who who is appointed when and where, and one year from now, and I look back and say whose term started when, and you gotta have a starting point, I guess. If you don't know, and people's terms are, I don't know, I mean. I don't think it's right or wrong to leave or take it out.
Okay.
What's number nine on that page?
Fifteen.
Section thirty-two point oh four.
Mrs. Ray.
That was the original planning commission back in nineteen seventy-two.
I think you can scratch it, what you guessed, then. We'll do, give you this gentleman.
I see the need for listing the term, like one person with the term of one year, two people with the term of two years, and two for a term of three. I agree, because, and there's a reason why that's set out that way, I'm sure, because of staggering toward terms, so all of your experience doesn't yet get put more to that one at the same time. Could you make it reflect just that, Brian? And I really don't care if you wanted to list them as the charter.
Will the, will push back a little, and when you originally started, you've got stagger like that, right, but now, when we've got you've already, you've already established it, and everybody gets appointed for a three-year term when you're appointed.
But you're reestablishing something. Isn't this for the yeah. You might need to go back and look at that, because we have we we have had advice from someone
Okay.
who indicates that we still have two, two-year, three, two, three years, and I truthfully don't know.
Okay.
So if Brian could check that.
What, what are we? Research on.
Checking out.
The terms, length of terms.
I think we're in agreement, we don't need to list the old things of the original.
Sure.
Scratch out. Also.
I have been.
The original members.
Yeah. Charter. I have been on some established boards though, and I always have your experience left. And when you're going to close, nobody.
Right.
Everybody's new.
But, yeah, and I think with statute, if I remember correctly, and I could be wrong. When you start with the planning commission, you have those staggered, right, so everybody doesn't come off at the same time. But I think in, in practice, once that one-year person comes off, it's not a one-year term in perpetuity, it's a they get a three-year term, once they're done, yeah, and staggered like that, but.
If they want.
Yeah, if they want, right, everybody doesn't get ad res on at the same time.
Right.
It's staggering, so, yeah.
And a lot of this stuff with the planning commission policy thinks the state code rules on what a planning commission can do and, and what council adopted. I, I proved this far, they're very close and.
So now we're down to page nineteen, fine arts council. Yeah. And I, they I know that there was extensive effort to secure their five oh one C three. I really hate to expand this entire thing, that's the whole thing. Is there some way? Because I do believe that there is a growing interest to have an arts council. And I think that some of the folks currently are experiencing some um family illness, long-term illness, and hardship, but I do believe that they'll want to do this in the future. So if we could leave this in as a possibility to resurrect in the future, I think that would be helpful. They actually came to a council meeting when it was being discussed, and they were adamant that they were an active group.
And I, I recall something a year ago, maybe a little more. Maybe it was in twenty, when I thought council passed some kind of resolution that suspend the fine arts, get fine arts council or they were urban renewal, they were urban renewal, okay. Maybe I'm getting my council next up, or my commission next up, but yeah.
We had that funds that we, what was the account we closed, mayor, where we fifty million, it was like three hundred dollars, and we took it out and stuck it in the.
That was the fairs and festivals.
That was another one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it. Yeah, so if you can save the arts council, I think that.
We, we don't want to do that.
Please.
We didn't want, you didn't want to try that suspended.
No, no.
Okay, leave it in, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Here's one of that question I had for you all, this is just observation from the day we were given this. I think council created this, right, some kind of professional creates its arts council. It looks like they're appointing the members to it. And I think they kind of operated as a very, they assumed that their five oh one C three is separate from the city, it's under capacity, and then dissolution, you know, there at the end, it said the, in the business organization shall be dissolved for the purpose whatsoever, all assets of the council, and I assume means the fine arts council on current of the board directors will be transferred to an activity organization which sustains the art. Which I don't think there's anything wrong with, but it sounds like the board of directors themselves have to get together and dissolve themselves. Maybe that's right, maybe that's wrong. But it's just, I think a little, like, if you guys took a vote, you know, it's a, where does all of them, maybe you can, maybe you can't, I, I, I don't know, yeah.
If they are their own five oh one C three with their own tax ID number, then they dissolve themselves.
And that's probably proper, I'm not arguing it, I just, you know, are they really a part of the city, or, oh, I don't know how that relationship drives, really. How that works.
I have troubles with that, too.
Yeah. So, I don't know where I'm going with that, but I love those cities.
I think because they were created by the city, and they is the same way with housing and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know.
Let's leave the language in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's easier to take it out, and also, and then there is to put it back in.
Yeah.
Okay.
They were resuscitated, so I think it makes sense to straighten that, like, the best, it would be.
Yes.
Why is that, right?
They were very active, and they had a lot of really nice acts.
I think you still get their bank statement. I mean, it's not, it's thousands of dollars in their bank accounts that is sitting there, which I don't think anybody here is a signer on, from what I understand.
I think that in the future, we'll see some of that, too.
Okay. My, I just, it's just bizarre.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had to turn.
Sorry for the confusion, I thought that, but I thought you all. I don't, I don't know if disband is the right word, but I thought you all in.
Yes. And next, we're under charter board on page twenty-four. Yeah, I want to, we don't have one.
We have an arts council. And becomes active again, and we have Columbia Club, which is. Even the fine arts model, they be over that? I think the Columbia Club's space to be determined, and that there is no plan right now. Now, I think at times we've considered historic landmarks, if they can own property, you think that they don't really have a home per se, and then near stuff, it might be nice to give. Let them have the bees, only release it and operate it, you know? I think we're really in dire need of a champion, in the sense of, yeah, fine arts was fire up, run, run the Columbia Club, I think. I just think. I already talked a lot about arts and. Yeah. Anything to do with arts, they'd probably wanna be involved in.
Chief, or it also needs to be built as a community center where people would go and rent and have parties, because I think it sells to public much better that way in this cultural stuff.
Well, disagree, I mean, I think that's been the intention, is to say, this is doing for everybody, right?
That's what I think it would be, culturally. C, C, C camp, yeah.
So, I hope in the next couple of months, we can kind of sort that stuff out, and I've been saying the next couple of months since last year. But I think before we transitioned to a new council, we didn't kind of get that stuff settled a little bit, and probably grow, but HLC is in a period of transition, it seems like right now, and we'll see what comes out of that. Um, yeah, right now, I've been managing it as a city asset, say, let's get the roof fixed and the building secure, so it's not falling in on itself, we don't have to pay any thousand dollars. Yeah.
How has the quality of work been, has it propelled out through?
I think so. Hasn't, hasn't been on there that long enough, probably, if you haven't had those. Yeah, we've been in, I think it's been pretty decent, we haven't had any issue. I'm getting started, we've been there today. Hmm, you're good.
Yeah.
So I think we're good, and the gutters, we've had some pickups, but I think they're at a point now where they're gonna function for the most part, which may have a couple things to fix. Um, but the last time I ran real hard, I was down there, you know, water wasn't dripping off the edges, it was going to the gutters, and it would make me feel during, so that's a win, performing where we were, we're, we should all say that, but, yeah.
I was gonna wait till your report.
Yeah, well, this is, I'll say.
Because I, I did want to talk to you about that emails that was sent today.
I need the charter board. Yeah, we're digressing quickly.
Okay. What do we do about charter board?
Isaiah, we, we had mentioned, just generally, if, if the charter would ever need. With that again, retain.
Be resurrected. Does it, do they have to be elected by regular municipal election? Oh, goodness. Because what if you, you really wanted to work on it two years after an election, then you've got to wait two years before you can, I just. That's slow as molasses.
And never get anything done.
To have a special election. I thought that the West Virginia law had changed as far as, uh, establishing a charter board. Can you check that before we finalize this?
Back if you want to change charges, kind of, if you're some doubt. I'll use the broad phrase charter board, one way or the other, let me make sure.
The city of Elkins changed theirs, and they, they didn't have an election to appoint a board, I don't believe.
We, we did some research about, remember when we were looking to the two thousand three charter, and how that came to be? I don't, I think Weston elected a charter board, and they made some recommendations, the charter was created, but when it ended up passing, it never went to a vote, from what we could tell. It was passed as a charter amendment ordinance, and, uh, a pretty severe one, I should say, because it got rid of the whole entire other charter, but this one in. So I think there's, there's some state code that speaks to, you know, how, how, which path you wanna take. I'm kind of with Brian on this, I think you can leave the charter board language in there, what's it gonna hurt, you don't have a charter board currently?
No, I think it's fine to leave the language in there, but I, I don't agree with A, I think that. That it allows the city some leeway on getting those members appointed, so that you aren't stalled out for two or three years.
And I guess, my thought is, is that if we get to the right where we want a charter board, you're gonna look at your, your codes, how are we gonna charter board, and someone say that, like, we don't like that provision, can we change that with whatever, if we think state code is? You pass an ordinance to strike that, or change it to whatever would fit the existing state code, then you could point your charter board.
Since we're making these changes, can't we just match the state code now?
You can look at it, I just, maybe leave you some option, I guess it's.
Okay.
I mean, if eight, eight dash three dash nine is telling me you have to have an election occur in the same manner as elected city offices. You're kind of handcuffed for that.
Maybe.
Maybe find, maybe find another way.
You go.
We have the twenty-sixth, uh, yeah, sorry, historically, our permission, I don't have the dates for that.
And then, in the ninety-eight ordinance that created the HLC, those, those are blank.
I don't know.
So. I think it's been there for fifteen years, and it's operating like that, I don't think anybody wants. At this point, be able to go back fifteen years and say it's improper, improper ordinance.
Okay.
Think you just scratch it to a term convincing, or you just grab that at this point?
We've been.
That sounds good.
We're scratching to a term, part with, to a term and.
Commencing on the day, and all the way through following matter. I think you can leave it the following manner, right? Be the five members, probably take that.
Yeah.
Incidentally, we need members on that board, if anybody knows, if anyone.
We did at one point in time, and she was born as the chairman chef with some of the project, I think that she may be open to it at some future point.
Anybody?
So everything else is okay with the story plan, so we can move on to cemetery board?
Yeah.
And Brian, on page thirty, you have this Weston doing this, and yes, yes, they are, but there's very few lots available, but.
There's a language on Old Hill Cemetery in there already.
I'm enjoying it.
Sometimes, Mary, we just get lucky.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree with it, or other applicable sections of West Virginia.
Thirty-one.
Yes. Okay, and now on page thirty-one, you asked if it was a thing, the ambulance service authority. There is an ambulance authority board on the county level. I did not, I don't know about on the city.
Correct, there did used to be, but no. I don't believe there is any more.
Is this the ambulance, I mean, that you're in that first sentence, they're acting in conjunction with the county commission, is that the ambulance? Is that what's operating our ambulance authority right now, or what's controlling our ambulances?
The county commission appoints those people, yes. My guess is when you have the city hospital, real city hospital, on High Street, they probably had a.
You're probably right, then.
City ambulance service at the time, so this probably. I do even know. How I'm born at that hospital, what are you talking about? Do you know where it was?
No, I'm. Best you suspended that, where she tried it.
You know where Dr. Ruski's office? I think we just strike it, I don't know how they. You know, did that years ago, but it was well before I can remember.
We're not, Weston itself isn't providing ambulance service anymore.
No, no. Well, it says Emergency Ambulance Service Act of nineteen seventy.
We don't see the county orders.
County orders, or the ambulances, yeah.
I got a little bit of this to figure out.
Okay, you want that?
I've never.
It's always be good to see how it transpired.
But is it Weston decided they're not doing it anymore, or they're doing it or something?
Well, here on thirty-two says the Weston County emergency.
You know, they say, now the emergency squad got started, that wasn't really going in. Well, I think that the ordinance had started at, at the county level, right? Because here's kind of speaking to, you know, the partnership between the commission and the city, creating an ambulance authority, and I'm assuming. That it somewhere in that line, and it got changed by orders for the commission related, it was a full, full control.
Yeah, Debbie, I will show you my, when I was in the old fire department over here.
Yeah.
Weston's fire department run the ambulances, okay?
What year was that, nineteen seventy-five?
Nineteen seventy-one. Nineteen seventy-five is when I went to the county, because the Weston Fire Department just could not do it any longer.
Okay.
And it was funded, fire department was still funded by city, but there weren't enough funds, so the county picked it up. That's when John Carroll come in.
I, I, I'm there in London.
Yeah.
Squad building was actually down where his fetal shop was.
Yeah, yes, it was.
A G.
Yeah. That, that had moved for a while, right? So they look. In my lifetime, I'm pretty sure, yeah. That was way before us, and they. I'm pretty sure, we went to Park Chapel, but ambulance is still down there in some capacity. Thank you, Dave.
Public freezing, goes up that tower, and it's still down.
Thank you. Also spending.
Okay, we don't know.
I've heard of it.
Thirty-two.
And thirty-three.
Yeah, thirty-three. Okay. Elections.
Yeah.
There in that thirty-three point oh one A, that kind of self-explanatory.
That looks good.
The, our, our, our two thousand three charter uses those four, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen sections to discuss. Our city election rules and all, whatever. And the next one. I'm trying to re, I'm trying to rekindle one memory. Electing officers. Used to be elected your mayor and your council members, and I think police chief, and probably street commissioner, and probably city attorney. Now we don't do that, we just invite the mayor and the council. And. The terms are, the mayor's term, the council term are every four years, not by any, like, like section, like subsection being indicated. And so just putting the, I think you add there in that person is the election for the purposes of electing officers. Such as, like, some kind of language as council members and mayor, because that's who the charter says the officers are. I think it's self-explanatory, you have to conform your elections to your city charter in West Virginia state law.
I think that was fine.
Ball commissioners required are there, they're not there, it's right. Or you're in there, or. You took that to harm, I said, page forty-five.
See, let's see it, too, you're saying they start on July one and hold office for four years, yeah.
I think state law does require you have ballot commission. For.
It says right here, two persons.
Somewhere in our charter, it says something about pointing election officers. Counsel or something like that, I didn't know, that's what, that was my question, ballot commissioners, the election officer. God, thank you all so much. Now, my business.
I think. On section nine of our charter, common council shall, in advance of every election, appoint election officers to conduct the election. Ball commissioners for election officers, subsection being on there, indicates ballot commission shall be appointed from January fifteenth and thirtieth in each year. Once a general election's going. I don't think that's string, I think that's generally one of the charter.
Being, there are respective city executive committees, there's county executive committees. Page thirty-four, B one, first sentence. And.
Session Jim.
Yeah.
But they have.
Recording.
We file here, right?
On page thirty-five, I stepped out. There, on page thirty-five, and section thirty-three point oh five, charter reference relating voting pretense, see two thousand three charter, section ten, I took out two thousand three. I think we gotta start thinking charter, when you think charter.
Okay, that's.
When you, you say two thousand three charter. I. They conglutins, so there, what other charter is there?
Right.
No, we're not. The thirty-three point oh six, I, I. Alter this language to mask the charter. Qualifications, pretty simple, at a time of, a time of election or appointment. Mayor or city council members shall be residents of the city and entitled to vote for members of common council.
So they don't have to be a resident for X number, if you. So they don't have to be a resident for X number of years, just at the time of filing.
Right, it's kind of their election.
Okay. Has it always been that way? I thought you had to be a resident six years.
Charter says you don't have to. I, I ran into case law, it indicates residency requirements. Not necessar, are not necessarily required. Use this, use this term. Running for office is a fundamental right, you just can't willingly take it away, as the, the city, the county, the state, and the federal government has to have some kind of compelling interest. To take away your, your fundamental right to run for office, and what takes away that fundamental right? Well, people think that if you're committing treason, or if you're committed to bribery in an election, or stuff like that, that's a compelling reason to not let you run for office. But in the past, people made, governments made you pay a poll tax, just to come vote. And those things have been outlawed and, and taken away. What compelling interest does a city have in making pay one dollar or five dollars to vote? None, I think that's US Constitution. Doesn't make you have to do that anymore. So, that's, that's what these next couple, next couple paragraphs are. I think, I think we're looking at some vestigians of a time when you had to be more than just a citizen, more than just able to vote. In order to run for office. Whether those prior rules were right or wrong, I don't know, but, but they're, they're not matching up with what our qualifications of mayor and council.
The bottom line is you have to be a resident of the city according to our charts, okay? So we're good.
Well, the resident and able and entitled to vote.
Right. Right.
Looks good to me. I didn't realize the city attorney holds a meeting for all commissioners and clerks.
I'm out.
Okay, I guess you will. Police court, yes, you're there.
If you're there, there are table contents. So I got a couple of things, and I had a couple of things that I wanted to try to match up with, with what. What are, what are new police court rule, or new police law is. Had in it relative to what? What was left over in nineteen seventy two.
Is our current ordinance municipal court or police court?
Both, I identify the same thing. That, and thirty four point oh one A, June seventh, twenty twenty one, I think that was the day that. Ordinance was passed, running somewhere in the day.
Coming in right long, this is. Lot better. This would mean that the city clerk needs to complete the municipal court judge training every year as well. But did you read up here, it says the mayor? I saw that, but it says in the event the mayor cannot fulfill the role. Okay.
You've taken the court quarter turn here.
Looks good, really.
Page forty two, our good friend, city treasurer, treasurer needs to be. Page forty two.
Oh, to finding.
Can we check the fees on the special fees? Thirty four dot twelve special fee, police court judge, a fee of four dollars, which criminal case proceeding, which shall be taxed above the cost. Shall be all, it's like, it's almost like every time he does K's, a machine, for us, we turn into a fee of four dollars and pay it in.
It's only got it down to fifty cents. Four dollars is wrong when I do this thing every time.
Is that good of the?
Send it to. Not report.
Okay, so that, no, that's again, I'm sorry, that is good, police court judge, but we just charged a fee of four dollars. And then police pension funds is a fee of one dollar, shall be taxed, probably causing criminal traffic case, and such, they will pay the police pension fund in the city.
I don't know if that's one or not.
I don't think it is. Be honest with you. So that's something we gotta look at.
I think having it, having it any day is different than. Not actually doing it. If you want to say I'm good, or even good, we just don't change it.
But don't we have to do?
Yeah.
That's what we thought, the way you send that.
Let me know, discussing the portion of it here today is. I don't think it's the appropriate time. Probably.
Be on forty two. Shall be taxed as part of the cost for the clerk certifying a transcript of whose unheard audit in a particular case, and just any, the same to the clerk of the circuit clerk, the state road commissioner, or any other officer in the community with two men. If I law required to certify such transcript.
Well, there's probably some kind of state code that indicates these various people need the.
Do you want to check on that?
I'm looking at it, I can quite grasp what I'm reading.
It looks like.
Proceeding.
That's fee for their service and verifying it. Who would be the state road commissioner for this, is that the head honcho, or I mean, who do you send it to?
That's a question of language, and our language has changed since this. And the titles have changed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Which I'm sure.
And on page forty three, letter C, the jail fund. That's not applicable at this time.
This section, this subsection scene is currently intended. And do we put people in jail? I don't think we.
Yeah, we do, but right now I have a, the county gets a bill for. All Lewis County people. It may change in the future.
Because as may be necessary to pay the fee charged by us, charged the city by the county here, so we're not getting charged anything right now. Leave it there, and then that does look on, and we've already got that in ordinance, or code, that we can pass that fee along, but. As long as it's allowable by state law.
Yeah.
I'd say leave it.
Okay. Like, it's any person committed for the non-payment of time and costs, not in custody, may be compelled to work on the streets, alleys, or covered grounds, or works until it finds a foster pay. Allowing a dollar fifty for dogs, or other. I think that's a string. No, I'm saying, let's do it.
Yeah, what should you go there, is this allowable?
You could use the term workhouse, like there was some kind of. Entity that you can send people to, that when they go out and fix streets, or pick up trash, or whatever. It's still, it's still in West Virginia, too.
So municipal court, we could be in somebody's community service, pay their fine.
Very hard.
It wasn't done in. Not so long ago because of including them in workers' comp agreements, and I guess other reasons as well.
Oh, we have to cover the number of their staff that are out there.
I forget that.
If it's in state code, I don't mind saying this.
They're not considered an employee.
Wait, our board members, volunteers. So you do have to cover them, they're, they're performing a service. Whether it's volunteer or not.
Didn't leave in there for that.
Yeah.
The judge. Option, yeah.
Sure. Number forty four, authority of merit to commit to prison persons who are in defaulted payment.
I think that's. In, in the code. I think it says something in effect of mayor. And mayor's role as municipal judge or whatnot, and lists different powers mayors have. As a municipal judge. Or just mayors.
Yeah, you never know, well, that's fine. Are, are you gonna change the language in the middle of the page, like, instead of saying mayor's, mayor's court to municipal courts? We really don't have a mayor's court. It's listed that way twice. When I see on page forty seven, you struck out the contempt fine.
Yeah, I, I, I randomly picked numbers. I mean.
I think that's fine, it gives you a nice range.
One hundred and ten dollars, beating by the inside of it.
No. Good idea. Right through this, good job, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, city.
Again, I'm just trying to get back in style here, I was sick in last week, and I'm headed to Charleston tomorrow for the municipal league on the afternoon, I think. We're still debating back and forth about whether or not, but.
He needs to go.
It hurts, and. I don't know if I can do that, but, all right, so that'll probably be most of tomorrow, and then. Really just trying to catch up with some, some of the financial things, I've had a couple meetings this week. I'm just working through some outstanding things, and then. Mayor's working on the annexation stuff, so once we get that kind of dossier done, we'll try to shoot that over to our contact within Seton and Johnson, see if they can get forwarded on to. And also, I guess for, for priority standpoint, my, my desk is the municipal fee. And first due fire calculations and all that stuff, and so. I'm hoping, I think we're gonna have a series of these meetings throughout the month, right, trying to push through this stuff. But before the February meeting, hopefully I've got at least a draft to you, and why I bet it's one of our talking points one night, discuss that. So I'm very proud, and we're trying to limit the amount of time we're spending here, but I do think that. It'd be good for us to sit, sit around this table, and Bill talk about that, and answer questions, stuff that, so. Really, that's, that's about it, we've got the Columbia Club thing, we're gonna try to get that hashed out tomorrow with contractor.
But you won't be here, right?
Marty will be, and I'll be up there first thing, I went and took a look at it today. We've had, also, not Suzie is the other neighbor, we've had some miscommunication or something, I, you know, I called, my messages, and things of that nature. I was there today, there's some shingles back in the backyard, we had cleaned off the roof, we had put their gutters out. It appears, and that's what we've been told, right? And so, there's some stuff around the backside, there's gonna need to be cleaned up, but I think we can get that to. A place where we're all happy with it. The fence on the opposite side, not between the Columbia Club and that neighbor, but on their backside of their property lot, is a pretty bad disrepair. We did stick, I think, some floorboards in the ground, the contractor did stick that thing back up for.
In some way.
Yeah, which I don't, and according to contractor, I don't think I'm ever gonna argue with, but, and I can see where, where they come from. The thing wasn't because they touched it, it fell over on itself, you know, all those floorboards are rotted at their bases, apparently there, so. The section that didn't fall over has been stepped back up. But I don't think it's necessarily our role to fix a fence, which I don't think they even claim is theirs, I think the neighbors claiming that has their thing.
Did we move it?
No, that, that's just that, like, the way it's been explained. Really heavy wind came through and blew that thing over, after we've been in their backyard and used their route. And so I don't think there was any. Maybe the contractor pushed it over with their bucket, but I seriously doubt it, that's not what they said, but they did go back under their own offices, put floorboards, and stick that section if it collapsed, solder it working back up.
What about the earth movement, we moved some earth there, right? In the backyard?
Yeah, and they, they spoke to that homeowner at the time, and said, that wasn't the plan, they did it with their own, but the owners were. Remitable to this, has actually been turned backyard more usable at the time, so they straw seeded all that, and. Was a straight hillside, and they made a landing for a skid steer, turn around and come back out. They, they said, well, we'll fix it, put it back the way it was, and I said, no, we actually like that better for us, so. That was our, we said, we'll straw and seed it, probably better than without it.
Are they saying something different now, or there's something about, well, the fence was an issue? There are pallets there, that was an issue.
Maybe there's some, some, still some crap back there, but we need to get out.
Yeah, the degree. The, the fence definitely, she wasn't happy with, with the way the fence was put back up there, and she sent something on a fire pit. Fire pit that's.
There may have been one back there.
They don't know.
Yeah, I've got her number, we'll try to give her.
A fire pit for them, I mean, they have those little kids.
I'm not sure what they ended up having back there, but I think it was just brick, if I remember right, they had kind of stacked up around this fire pit, and it probably got moved when. The landworks happened, if that's what it was, we'll try to get some information there. And we, so everybody understands, we had an easement with them. After we had some issues there with the contractors going outside their bounds, so we got that easement established. Part of that was that they're gonna get the roof inspected, because the contractors, the subcontractor of the contractor was on top of their roof installing gutters.
Right.
And so, our contractor got up there, they had inspection done by a third party, and we cleaned the roof and all that stuff, so. And we'll, and we're gonna be paying for that third party inspection of their. And we, and we're gonna be paying for that third party inspection of the roof, make sure that nothing was damaged.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good thing.
And that was all agreed to, but when we decided, we decided to do all that stuff, so. And we've tied in their drains for their home, we've got those drained away from their house, with the drains that work at the Columbia Club store. I think, we even, I think, when they were up on the roof, they tried to step, fix their roof cap for them, but their chimney was in second repair that. It was gonna be. Yeah, yeah, it wasn't something that we could just do, the more we touched, the more we moved in the asphalt we were. We offered to try to do that with them, so. We haven't been perfect, and I don't, I'd say we is generally the project. I think the city reflects too what we said we were gonna do, and for the most part we've done, they just said, kind of. You know, at one point a contractor got up there, not was this contractor, was the guy that tore off the face, they walked onto their porch, which went. Forward and plugged it into an outlet on their, on their porch, wasn't something we gave permission to do. You know, it's not something I don't think is kosher in any, any contractor business, right?
No, no.
They did it, and we quickly apologized and said, we won't have that happen anymore, so. They've been through some stuff up there.
They have, I was just wondering what we can do for them if they made it. Better than what we, we're starting to.
Fence kind of waves like that, so you know.
Yeah, it does.
Where do you stick your section, your toll and all that stuff to make, I haven't looked at it, I think that's a challenge.
There's, there's areas of their fence that have fallen over, but we're nowhere near the construction area, just the fence is very, very poor condition.
Well, I don't, I mean, we may have to get them a new fence.
I said, I think we, we offer to put the fence back up, but really, I don't think we really have any obligation to. I'd say we've operated in good faith, that's my speculation, unless.
It was rotted to start with, and.
The post fell over.
So we replaced the post.
And we have it, I mean, on the, the other side of property, this fence is property connecting to ours. We've pieced that fence back together, there were some rotten pieces there, we stuck the post in, use the old panels and the panels that were broken.
Are you, oh, well, that's great, is she happy with that?
I think so, I think she's coming the fourteenth, we'll powwow with us and talk, finish the touches, but.
Okay.
I think she will be.
Or can we do that on the other side then?
Well, I think that's essentially what I'm trying to say, is that we've done that, that level of treatment. We've given them, the problem is, their, their fence is in such disrepair. You know, we've stuck it back together with what's there, but we didn't build Suzie defense and we're not really.
Understand what you're saying.
But. We put it in better condition than we found it.
So it's gonna take more than the new post that once you did on the other side for this fence?
Yeah, I mean, the fence is Peter Carter all the way down the side, side of the hill, and like I said, I think it's some question. They had alluded to that that wasn't their fence, it was their neighbor's fence.
Okay.
So I think that, you know, we don't want to involve even another party in this whole project, I think.
Yes.
If there's a question about us knocking down the fence, we still built, bought some four by fours and getting those up, the contractor, the go group, just get it taken care of. Put it back together, but we don't want to play, play anything to any of that fence.
So they've covered that cost, contractors covering all costs for the new posts, everything that's been done to, you know, replace or repair the neighbor's stuff. That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Is that in our contract with them as well?
I will say it was in our contract, but I think it's, you said, you know, we worked some things out. While we were doing stuff to make it amenable to, I think, but they, the, that's kind of contractor business one on one, right? They're trying to leave a good taste in everyone's mouth as they're coming out there, so they're costing a couple of four by fours, they. They were able to do it, and, and they, we did never gave them permission to go onto their property, and they did that. They were kind of in a sense in a pile of doo doo there, and so they tried to make it right with that, I don't know, I think. Like, whatever crisis was averted, and it cost a couple of four by fours, I think that was way cheaper than.
I think that is, I mean, that's unbelievable, that they felt that they could do that, and. On our end, I'm sure, thought never occurred to you to put it in the contract, because who does that, you know?
Well, we weren't, I mean, we thought, I thought we were under the impression, because we, you know, there was a parcel next to, Kristen Bailey's parcel up there, they kind of connected in Catty Corner. Columbia Club and I, the notes from one side, and I thought they were gonna do a skid steer, probably that property down in the back was kind of the assumption. And I thought we were pretty clear about it out there, and the first day they're backing into their person's yard and turning around, and they say, no, we've gotta have this area to be able to do that. Maybe it was cross signals on my part, but.
And then did we go to them courts and ask for permission about Ranger?
We've had numerous conversations with them, yeah, and they were, like I said, were fine with it, we didn't get the easement established until later. Uh, we should, should have done that sooner, but we, we had a hard time communicating with them, yeah, so we get kind of fired up, call us and. Return the call, and they don't return back and.
Is it easement still good?
I think we're done, aren't we, in December third, first, we can renew it, and. Like, hopefully, we can just knock on the door and say, we're, we're done. And give us permission to be out here tonight, and we'll get this, or tomorrow, and clean this stuff up and be done with this stuff.
Yeah, will you? Check with them and, and, yeah, tomorrow, I guess before you release them.
I'll give a phone call. I've got birth photo and your husband's contact information, so hopefully I can warn her, warn her about it.
Okay, thank you, and the, um. Contractor, is he going to clean up around the front of the building as well?
Yeah, I mean, Marty, I think we, we're not real sure where some of that stuff came from, right?
Yeah, when Kenny Hall left there before Christmas, there wasn't anything on the frame of the building there, except a wheelbarrow and a couple of ladders and. Then somewhere between Christmas and this week, and, and some of that stuff, I don't know, maybe it was in the neighbor's or maybe wrong to do the, I don't know. But I did tell, there's two of them contracted. But I did tell them, you know, it's gonna be, to bring your doctor, and make sure everything's in.
Thank you.
And so I've, I've got a, a little agreement with Mills Group for three thousand dollars to work on the front, so I'm gonna authorize that in the mini portal on that. So we can try to get that rolling. Uh, and hopefully we can get, it's basically, I hate to use the word conceptual, but. Uh, we need them to figure out how we're gonna access this building, we've been begging an architect to figure this out for us, and so that's. Instead of signing a big contract for fifteen and twenty thousand dollars to do it all, I said, let's just do it bite sized portion, so we. Control our costs through the best we can, so that's coming as well.
So back to the contractor, maybe perhaps in the future, we maybe write in the request. Proposal that subcontracting is not allowed. Can we do that?
Places I've been, I mean, I'm sure Department of Highway is like, they, they want a right of approval on subcontractor, things like this.
Okay.
You know, where you, you really, I want to see their business bites, and then I want to see all the things, they're not necessarily having an issue with that necessarily. But it, it becomes a sticky widget, just the amount of paperwork and stuff like that you're controlling, and you have a larger job, and you've got multiple subcontractors.
Oh, that's true.
And I mean, I don't want to name any names and protect the name that you'll do, I guess, in this case, but, yeah, they gave me a name, they said. The, the subcontractor seemed like legitimate business, it wasn't, hey, that's my government cousin Bob, this is, this is a real business. One of our towns here, and so, I wouldn't think they would pass all the mustards of being legitimate. You still show up in your own library without permission.
Right.
And without anybody speaking English.
How about the, you know, the brick at the front?
On the front floor?
Yeah.
Larry Schneider, who was living, went out there and looked at it. And he said that they're very secure, he said, we might come follow, he said, they can work, and they're trying to tear them off.
That is, and that's good news. Well, good, thank you, I, I appreciate it, guys, I know that's been a, a, a challenge over there. For everybody, and has been a challenge, and I appreciate it, so I guess, Marty, people are leaving us presents out front.
I'm not sure where that stuff came from, like I said, I know I was there when Kenny Hall pulled Drunk down there. And even there's a big piece of the structure that actually fallen off the building, where we can gather all that up, and all that too, there was. There was nothing but a wheelbarrow and a couple of ladders in the front.
They're still there, I mean, yeah.
Any other questions?
Um, can we get it? Dried into it or, or it out or something, can you lock minutes now, or am I mistaken?
Thanks, I saw Chris Flywood last week, did, but Mike and the three car lumber and screwed back on there, right, I screwed Andy's fly with it.
And we're using the same one we had before.
Restricted area.
If you put caution paper, something, caution, because they tear that down.
That's why I was.
Big way turning around the corner here.
Thank you.
I was gonna do a lot of just snoring in the wall. I was sleeping there and it's right on the roadway.
You have anything else, Nate?
I don't think so, I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks for this week, we'll see you next week.
Uh, our next meeting date is, is it Monday, Tuesday? Tuesday at six because of the holiday. Okay, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn, I'm here to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
My first motion. You watch, you can't find nobody wants that to fall down, and brought the ass together, a couple of three posts involved, and everybody.
That thing was falling down.
Side of his house, they're all smashed around. It's there, same side of the building, the last one there, that's to be, sure, it's.